Monday.
May 4, 2020 at 7:00 PM via teleconference. Prayer will be offered by City Clerk Susan Love Ring and Alderman Dowd will lead us in the pledge of flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, oh God, with a spirit of unity and understanding, which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As President of the Board of Aldermen, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the Governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-4, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with this emergency order, I am confirming that we are, A, providing public access to the meeting by telephone, with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. We are using WebEx through the city's IT department for this electronic meeting. All members of the Board of Aldermen have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through this platform, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen to this, listen into this meeting, sorry, through dialing the following number, and using the password 273974. The public may also view this meeting on Comcast Channel 16. B, providing public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing this meeting through public postings. Instructions have also been provided on the city of Nashua's website at NashuaNH.gov and publicly noticed at City Hall. C, providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. If anyone has a problem accessing the meeting via phone or Channel 16, please call 603-821-2049 and they will help you connect. Adjourning the meeting if the public is unable to access the meeting. In the event public is unable to access the meeting via the methods mentioned above, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. All right, let's start the meeting by taking the roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, please also state whether there is anyone with you in the room during this meeting, which is required under the right to know law. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman O'Brien.
I am present and there's nobody else in the room with me.
Alderman Cleve.
Present. The only being in the room right now is my Greyhound, but my husband is in the house and could be here at any time. I can hear everybody and I'm here because of social distancing. Thank you.
Alderman Kelly.
I am here. I can hear everyone. I am alone. Well, my family may be around, but they're not in the room with me. And I am here because of social distancing.
Alderman Dowd.
Alderman Dowd.
Fam.
I think we may have lost him because he's, there's a circle going around.
I'll come back to him. Alderman Karen.
I am here. I am alone and I am social distancing and I can hear you.
Alderman Clemmons.
I am here participating via telephone. I can hear everybody and I am participating with the Governor's Emergency Order.
Alderman Lopez.
I'm here. I'm alone. I'm complying with the Governor's Emergency Order.
Alderman Tenza.
I am here. I can hear everybody and I am alone in the room right now.
Alderman Lou. Alderman Jettie. Alderman Jettie, I believe you're muted.
I'm here. There's no one else in the room. I can hear you. And I'm here because I'm staying at home per the Governor's Order.
Alderman Schmidt.
I'm here. I can hear you. The only other beast in the room is my bird and the Governor's Order compels it.
Alderman Laws. Alderman Cleaver.
I'm present and I'm alone in the room. My daughter's in the Jason room. And I'm here because of social distancing under the Governor's Orders.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
I am here and I'm alone and I'm practicing social distancing.
Alderman Wiltshire.
I am here. I am alone and I am practicing social distancing and I can hear you. I also heard that from Alderman Laws and Alderman, Alderman Lou, that they will not be attending this evening's meeting. And I don't see Alderman Dowd on either. Also joining us is, I don't know if the mayor's on?
I am.
Good evening, Mayor. Corporation Counsel.
Good evening, Madam President.
Thank you. Corporation Counsel Steve Bolton. I believe from Penachuckeck we have Jay Leonard, Chairman of the Board, Larry Goodhue, CEO, Don Ware, COO, George Sholl, Corporate Controller. Communications.
Communications been received from President Laurie Wiltshire, calling a special Board of Aldermen meeting on Monday, May 4, 2020 at 7 o'clock PM.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communication and place it on file. Tonight we are meeting to talk about some legislation that Penachuckeck is needing from us. So I'm going to turn the meeting over to Jay Leonard.
My name is Thomas J. Leonard. I'm here as Chairman of the Board of Directors. Thank you very much for accommodating us. I'm going to actually pass it over, pass it over to Larry Goodhue right away just to keep things direct and he knows the most. So thank you very much. I appreciate all of your assistance in this.
Thank you. Larry.
Thank you, Alderman Wiltshire. And tell me if you can hear me clearly.
I can hear you clearly.
Very good. Larry Goodhue, CEO of Penachuckeck Corporation, CEO and CFO. I am also calling you from my home. I am alone in my dining room office and socially distancing in complacency with the Governor's Stay-at-Home Orders. We had provided this communication to the Board of Aldermen as it relates to an approved PPP loan under the federal government's stimulus act in the second round of funding that was actually opened up last weekend by the President and the Congress of the United States. As Penachuckeck Waterworks is a wholly owned subsidiary of Penachuckeck Corporation and Penachuckeck Corporation has as its sole shareholder the city of Nashua in New Hampshire. One of the requirements we have in that relationship as a debt-only funded entity is that anytime we are to consider any debt financing available to the corporation and/or any of its subsidiaries, those debt instruments must be pre-approved and/or approved by the Board of Aldermen as a collective representing the shareholder. As I mentioned, the corporation applied for this PPP loan in the second round of funding. We did not put in an application in the first round of funding. It was very early on in the process and we were determining what the impact of the COVID-19 preparedness and response was going to be relative to the overall financial operations and viability of the corporation as an essential entity operating in the state, in the city and in the region for which we serve. Penachuckeck Waterworks serves 11 different communities within the state of New Hampshire, including Nashua and part of 10 other, as well as sister subsidiary Penachuckeck East Utility, services another 19 communities within the state and Pittsfield Aqueduct 1. All of the employees that serve any of the entities under the Penachuckeck Corporation corporate umbrella, are employees of Penachuckeck Waterworks. And as such, the loan that was applied for, which is a Payroll Protection Plan Act or loan, is related to the conservation of jobs relative to payroll in carrying out financial duties. I provided to the Board of Aldermen a list of the basic tenets under which this loan is being sought and the reasons for it. And I guess at this point in time, I would just like to just query that the Board of Aldermen members did receive that communication that I sent to them this morning.
Did everyone receive that communication?
Yes. Yeah. Yes.
Okay, very good. I guess we did. Thank you, Larry.
Great. And so that being said, what I tried to outline in that communication was the basis for which we applied for this loan, the rationale for it, and the overall terms relative to the loan. It's a formulaic calculation based on the average monthly payroll and payroll-related costs for a corporation, and it's a two and a half times multiple based on that average monthly cost of operations. It's geared towards maintaining a workforce through this time of COVID-19 response. And as such, when we put in our application on Tuesday, we did not know if we even had an opportunity at this financing, but we felt we needed to apply for it. And we found out Thursday morning that we had been approved. One of the requirements under this program is, is once you've got that approval, you have 10 days in which to receive the funds or the commitment is withdrawn. And that was the basis for us asking for this expedited meeting with the city. We've asked for a similar treatment at the state level because that is another requirement in our approvals as a regulated utility within the state. As a debt-only funded organization, and since the corporation was acquired by the city of Nashua in January 25, 2012, we are a debt-only funded organization. And we have layers of debt inclusive of the note payable to the city of Nashua from Penachuckeck Corporation in making sure that the cash funding is there to service the bonds that were issued to purchase the corporation in 2012. We also have layers of debt relative to our capital projects at Penachuckeck Waterworks, Penachuckeck East, Pittsfield Aqueduct. We have various debt instruments related to those. And we have three different lines of credit. To our fixed asset lines of credit, one at Penachuckeck Waterworks for $10 million per year and one at Penachuckeck East for $3 million per year. And those are lines of credit to fund capital during a 12-month calendar year to then be termed out into long-term debt on an annual basis. And then we have a working capital line of credit that resides at the parent company level to backstop working capital during any calendar year. And it has a 30-day out requirement. That working capital line of credit is currently under an extension from its original termination date, which was last August. It's actually at its third extension, working with the bank relative to getting a permanent renewal of that line of credit. It's a $4 million line of credit and it is the backstop for all working capital needs for the corporation. We are currently drawn down on that line to the tune of $3 million. So we only have about $1 million worth of capacity left on that line in going into our heavy season, as well as in complacency with the Governor's Emergency Orders that put certain restrictions on us as a regulated utility during his emergency order COVID-19 response. In that, in that, in that set of orders, it is, it has suspended our ability to collect accounts if should they go into delinquency during this period of time with the orders in place and must arrange for special terms for the payment of those arrears by customers on the back end of that. We have seen some decline in the timeliness of payment of our bills. And as such, we needed to look at what resources were possibly available to help bridge the gap such that we could remain financially viable and fully functional on behalf of all of our customers while we are able to comply with and work with people in complacency with the Governor's Orders, allowing them the latitude for the impact that has occurred to individuals and businesses within the region. So we applied for this. It's an interesting endeavor in that you apply on an online portal. You have no idea how far down in the queue you are, whether you're going to receive the money and how fast you have to react. We couldn't wait to see how things just continued to evolve because then all of a sudden that resource would not be available to us. And we do not have the ability to expand the current line of credit with our existing bank. And in fact, our current extension expires on July 31st. We've had discussions with them about whether another extension is available and/or a renewal. And so this is a necessary element in the overall financial structure for the corporation to continue to do its job on behalf of Nashua citizens as well as other customers that we serve in the communities within the state. And is actually one, if you think about it, our debt is almost like a set of dominos. Should we not have that line of credit, we now have a problem relative to the other layers of debt, including the note payable to the city of Nashua. So it's a very vital element in this overall process. I've said a lot. I will stop talking for a minute and field any questions.
Are there any questions? On the board.
I have a question.
Alderman Lopez.
Just as a point of order, should we include the letter that was received this morning that was just referenced in the minutes for this meeting?
Are you going to make a motion?
I'd make that motion.
Motion is to accept the communication from Larry Goodhue dated May 4, 2020. Motion is to accept and place on file?
By roll call.
By roll call. Would the clerk call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cleve.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly. Alderman Dowd, are you back on?
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yeah.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have 13 years.
And that motion carries. Is there any further discussion questions for Penachuckeck before we get into the legislation? Alderman Kelly.
Thank you, Madam President. I had a couple of questions. I wanted to know, you mentioned being a debt-only funded corporation a couple of times. Can you just explain what that means?
Yes, this is Larry Goodhue responding to that question. One of the basic things that occurred when the city of Nashua purchased Penachuckeck Corporation in January 2012 is we went from being what is called an investor-owned utility, or IOU, which traditionally would have 50% equity and 50% debt in its capital structure. One of the bases for the entire acquisition being approved and being beneficial for the city and the corporation and the corporation's customer joint or rate payers long term is that the cost of debt is far less costly than the cost of equity. So prior to January 25, 2012, we were a publicly traded company on the NASDAQ exchange and we could issue stock into the public markets. When you issue stock into the public markets, it's subject to, you know, what that price might be to raise those funds by issuing stock to the market. But it also had an expectation, especially as a regulated utility, that you would generate significant enough profit to meet not only the requirements of the PUC relative to our earnings and allowed earnings, but also came with that a dividend requirement relative to pay a public company dividend. In our prior ownership structure and basically a 50-50 debt equity company, the equity portion, or about 50% of our capital structure, had a post-tax return in our allowed revenues authorized by the PUC of 9.75%. At the current interest rates at that, tax rates at that time, that resulted in about a 16% pre-tax cost of that part of the capital structure. With the city's acquisitions, that 16% cost went down to less than 6%. And as a result, the overall cost to rate payers for their water in our structure is far less. However, what it means is, in order to fund all capital operations within the company and in order to provide for working capital backstop to operations during seasons, we're a seasonal company. A lot of our revenues are generated during the summer. But during those off-season months where our revenues may not be enough to meet the fixed operating costs in those off-season months, you would need that working capital line of credit to backstop those costs. So that's as a debt company is the case. And the structure was set up to be a structure such that it did not generate excess profits, but was designed merely to cover the cost of operations, including servicing that debt, paying back the city for their debt to buy the company and to cover our operating costs. Whereas in an IOU situation, there would be extra profits generated such that it could provide cash resources to pay a public company dividend to public company shareholders. That's a long answer to a short question. Hopefully it gives you what you need, but I can add more if you need.
If I can follow up, please.
Absolutely.
Oh, thank you. Thank you for that answer. I thought it was great. Sometimes I think we put words out there and not everyone is fully understanding of what they are. So I like to make sure that people at home listening as now also understand what we're talking about. My second question was around your line of credit. You said that you were drawn about $3 million on your $4 million line of credit. Is that, you know, business as usual or did it start in January and it's becoming a slow drip? Like, how did you, you know, end up in that situation?
Well, part of that is because of the time of year, Aldermen. You know, we're coming out of our base consumption months, which typically start in, say, the October timeframe and last until about this time. So this is before people are starting to water their lawns. But we also came out of a year last year where, believe it or not, we had a very wet spring in May and June of last year. And as such, our water usage was lower in the first part of the year. So we actually had revenues that were below what we would have expected for the full year of 2019. We also are in the pendency of a rate case seeking rate recovery that we haven't had an adjustment to our rates, our permanent rates, since the 2016 past year. And that case is in pendency. And so part of where we're at in the line of credit is based on 2019's overall performance, the time of year it is in 2020, and the fact that we're awaiting rate relief relative to the rate case. That rate case is hopefully going to be concluded this fall. However, you know, it's a process that takes time and there are certain latitudes as to whether it's going to be completed this fall or it'll fall into the beginning of next year, which actually adds one more layer of the requirements for this money as a bridge to that, to that end game.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Questions for Mr. Goodhue? Seeing none? Would the clerk please read the new business?
We have a first reading of resolution R. 2035, authorizing Penachuckeck Corporation and Penachuckeck Waterworks, Inc. to enter into a Small Business Administration PAC check protection program loan with TD Bank, N.A.
There being no objection, I'll move for a second reading of resolution 2035.
Second reading of resolution R. 2035, authorizing Penachuckeck Corporation and Penachuckeck Waterworks, Inc. to enter into a Small Business Administration PAC check protection program loan with TD Bank, N.A.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion to recommend final passage of R. 20035.
Can we just do a final passage?
Yeah, final passage by roll call. Yes.
Discussion on that. Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire, this is Larry Goodhue once again. I think there may be a typo. I think it's supposed to be a paycheck protection loan versus a PAC check.
So noted. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The motion is for final passage. Is there a discussion on that motion?
Yes, I have.
Alderman Jettie.
Thank you. I was going to say this before, but I couldn't get your attention. I want to compliment you, Mr. Goodhue, in sending that letter. And I'd also like to compliment Attorney Bolton for requesting it. It's really helpful for, for, I'm sure, all the Aldermen, but for me in particular, to receive that kind of information ahead of the meeting so we can figure out what this is all about. So I appreciate that. And, you know, the letter explained in detail why you're asking for this resolution. But if I, if I could, Madam President, could I still ask Mr. Goodhue some questions?
Alderman Jettie.
So will this qualify for forgiveness so that the money you're borrowing under this program, if it's, I understand that if it's paid, if it's used to pay wages, then it's eligible for being forgiven. So in the end, this money will not have to be repaid. Is that correct?
Alderman, yes. Alderman Jettie. It is a very specific calculation. We have to use the money within eight weeks after the fund being given to us. It has to use 75% of payroll and up to 25% for non, very specific non-payroll related costs. We feel fairly certain that all, if not nearly all, of this amount will be a forgiven amount that allows for that pure bridge relative to us being able to comply with the Governor's Orders in service to our customers as they're dealing with their own individual circumstances at this time.
Okay, and could I follow up, Madam President?
Alderman Jettie.
In your letter, you also indicated that because of the Governor's Emergency Orders, you cannot, you know, stop providing water to people even though they might not be paying the bill. Do you have any, any estimate as to how much of that will be recovered once the crisis is over? Or will that, or will, well, will most of that be lost?
We don't have a clear look at that. The best comparison we can have was the 2008, 2009 financial crisis, where a good number of residents were impacted and local businesses were impacted in that financial crisis, excuse me. One of the things that's in the Governor's Order is, is when people are in this situation, they need to work with us in setting up a payment arrangement to pay that deferred amount in no less than six months' time. However, should you have a resident that, you know, they lose their job, they vacate their house, they get foreclosed on, they move out of the area, and all of a sudden they're no longer a customer of ours, we will never be able to recover that deferred sum of money. That same situation could happen with the unfortunate circumstance. That same situation could happen with the unfortunate circumstance where a business might be using some water and then they go out of business, they file chapter or whatever, and then they never, that may never be a collectible amount. So there is a portion of this that could be, as far as the delinquent payments, could be non-recoverable. However, like I said, the only basis that we have as far as any kind of a reasonable comparison was the 2008, 2009 financial crisis. And we did see some of that, though a part of it was mitigated by the fact that people were able to come back on and work with us and pay their past due bills. And/or some of the banks, as they may have foreclosed on some properties, actually paid the past due amounts in order to transact and resell those properties. So we don't know yet what that full impact might be, whether to, whether we'll get the deferred payment, delayed payment, and/or it'll be a permanently uncollectible item at this time.
Okay, thank you.
All said, Alderman Jettie.
Yes, thank you very much.
Anyone else? Motion before us is for final passage of resolution 20-35. Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cleve.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yeah.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tanza.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have 13 yeas and zero nays.
And resolution 2035 is duly adopted. Alderman O'Brien, do we have a motion?
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion that the May 4th, 2020 special meeting of the Board of Aldermen be adjourned by roll call.
Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cleve.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly. Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yeah.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
No.
Alderman Tanza.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have 12 yeas and one nay.
And that motion carries and we are adjourned at 7:33 PM. Thank you, everyone.